Good evening. Welcome, welcome to the October 7th, 2024, meeting of the Stillwater City Council. At this time, I will call this meeting to order before we get to the Pledge of Allegiance here though, real quick, I just want to remind you, if you're here to speak at any of our, on any of our agenda items or at the public hearing, please fill out the form outside, bring it in, and we'll make sure we get you on the list. I don't know if the folks out in the lobby can hear us when we're doing this. A lot of people here today. Good to see you all. All right, at this time, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance, and we have Boy Scout Troop, or Scout Troop 802, from here in Stillwater here with us today, and one of our scouts is going to come help lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
................................................................................. Really appreciate you scouts being here tonight, I know you're here as part of a merit badge, which is fantastic, to have you involved in community issues. All right, first up, we will start with Proclaimations and Presentations. I have a proclamation in recognition of Public Power Week, whereas the residents of Stillwater, Oklahoma place value on local control of community services and have chosen to operate a community-owned electric utility, and as customers and owners of this electric utility have a voice in utility operations and policies. Whereas the Stillwater Electric Utility provides homes, businesses, social services, healthcare, and local government agencies with reliable, efficient, and cost-effective electricity, employing sound business practices designed to ensure the best possible service at competitive rates. And whereas the Stillwater Electric Utility is valuable community asset that contributes to the well-being of local residents through financial support of general government, including public safety, transportation, parks, library, and recreation. And whereas the Stillwater Electric Utility is dependable and trustworthy institution whose local operation provides many customer protections and continues to make the community a better place to live and work, and contributes to protecting the global environment. And whereas the Stillwater Electric Utility will continue to work to bring low, low-cost, safe, reliable electricity to community homes and businesses, just as it has since 1901, when the utility was created to serve all Stillwater residents. And whereas Stillwater Community joins more than 2,000 other public power systems in the United States in celebration of public power. So now therefore, I, William Joyce, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim the week of October 6th through 12th, 2024, as Public Power Week to recognize Stillwater Electric Utility for its contribution to the community and the benefits of public power. We have some representative from the Electric Utility here tonight.
There he is.
Hi Lauren.
Good evening, Lauren Smith, Electric Utility Director. Just want to say thank you for all your support. Like it said in the, in the proclamation, we're one of 2,000 municipals across the country that provide these great services. So, thank you, and we appreciate it.
Lauren, you guys are leaving, before it's time to, you're gonna, this next one has a mascot, and I'm really, we need an electric power mascot for you guys too. Sparky is hard to beat though. It's also Fire Prevention Week, whereas the City of Stillwater is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all residents and visitors, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the location where people are at greatest risk. And whereas home fires caused 3,790 civilian deaths in the United States in 2022, according to the US Fire Administration. And whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore, therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas Stillwater residents should make sure their smoke and carbon monoxide alarms meet the needs of all their family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities. And whereas Stillwater first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas the 2024 Fire Prevention Week serves to remind students, residents, it's important to have a home fire escape plan. Now therefore, I, William Joyce, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim the week of October 6th through 12th, 2024, as Fire Prevention Week, and I urge all the people of Stillwater to plan and practice a home fire escape and support public safety activities of Stillwater Fire and Emergency Services. We have folks from the Stillwater Fire Department here as well.
Dustin Portman, Deputy Fire Marshal, Stillwater Fire Department. I want to say thank you to the council for supporting this, this is a program we've done every year for a very long time. This is a great chance for us to, to get out and impact every student in Stillwater. 3,000-plus kids that we get to talk to every year about fire prevention, and we, you know, we've seen the impact it has in our community, so thank you very much.
Thank you all.
I wanted to hear from the mascot.
I gotta tell you, I think Sparky is much more well-received at the elementary school assemblies than he does more than the city council meetings here. You guys were not as excited as I've seen the third graders get. All right, this week, we also want to recognize Model Aviation Day here in Stillwater. Whereas radio-controlled model aviation has been studied and utilized for more than 80 years, and whereas radio-controlled model aviation is an educational and enjoyable activity for all ages. And whereas model aviation is a science-technology-engineering-in-math, or STEM initiative, to teach mechanical design, aerodynamics, engineering, and electronics. And whereas the Stillwater Radio Control Flyers is a chartered association of the National Organization for Model Aviation, Academy of Model Aeronautics, and has been established in Stillwater for more than 50 years. And whereas the organization promotes educational growth and community involvement, and will host their annual Stillwater Model Aviation Day, for attendees to learn more about the organization and STEM initiatives on Saturday, October 12th, 2024, at the Oklahoma State University Unmanned Aircraft Flight Station at 4015 North Clay Road. Now therefore, I, William Joyce, Mayor of Stillwater, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim Saturday, October 12th, 2024, as Model Aviation Day in Stillwater. I think we have some representatives from the club?
I'm Kevin Odell, and have been a member of the club off and on since I was a student up here. The club has been around, like I said, for over 50 years, and it is a excellent STEM program. We have even a number of youth right now that we're working with, 4-H group, where they are coming out and learning a lot about aviation, and learning even about rocketry. So, we want everyone to come out, you have the opportunity to get hands on a radio-controlled airplane with an instructor, and see what it's like to fly one. And so, we want everyone to come out and enjoy it. There will be some food trucks there, so it will be busy.
Excellent.
And it is, as he said, the address, it's 12 miles east of Perkins on 51, to Clay Road, turn north, three and a quarter miles.
All right.
We want everybody to show up 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
Excellent, thank you so much, thanks for the work you all are doing.
I will say, while they're all getting set up over there, they've got quite an amazing field out there. When you fly over, it looks like a regular old airport. Real runway and everything.
Counselors, questions, comments, or action on the Consent Docket?
Motion to approve the Consent Docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent, please vote. Vote of five to zero, the Consent Docket is approved. Okay, so that takes us to public comment on items not scheduled for public hearing, so we're, we'll have, I think we have one person sign up to speak about one of the other, one of the other items on the agenda tonight, and that is Roger Gose. Come on down.
Roger Gose, 1120 East Cornell, sits on 3545?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Second reading ordinance, this one sort of snuck up on me, fire services. I see that the funds are, go to the fire fund, which I think that's sort of where they've been going, but I'd like for you all to consider in the future, moving some of those funds over to help pay the bond on the fire station. Part of the emphasis, emphasis for the new fire station was to improve service to the west side, outside of city limits, and I think it's only fair that those folks that are at least subscribing get to help pay for that, and maybe it'll lessen the, lessen the burden on the rest of us, and we get that thing paid off quicker. That's the thing I had, I, there's some other issues, I've talked to Terry about the chief, and he'll be getting with probably Brady about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I don't know if that's a legal issue that we'd have to discuss, about whether those, we'll have to, we can address that, right? Figure that out, we can use that money that way? All right. That takes us to public hearings. Item seven. 7A is the first public hearing pursuant to 62 OS, Section 859, and presentation of the proposed Stillwater Data Center Economic Development Project Plan and its supporting six incentive districts for the purpose of providing information, including an analysis of potential positive or negative impacts, and answering questions regarding the proposed project plan and incentive districts. Our special counsel for economic development, Dan Bachelor, is here. I don't know if you guys have a presentation planned tonight.
Your Honor.
Just here to answer questions. Please.
Mr. Mayor, distinguished members of council, I am Dan Bachelor, I'm here with my co-counsel, Lisa Harden. As the mayor said, we have been engaged as special counsel to the City of Stillwater in connection with its economic development efforts. This presentation will be short, there has been a prior presentation, but due to minor deficiencies in two published notices, we've had to repeat that initial public hearing. The purpose of this hearing, as the mayor just said, is to provide information about the proposed project and to answer questions. There will be a second public hearing at which all will be invited, who are interested, to make statements for and against the project plan and its adoption before action by the city council. I think we have a presentation keyed up, but I'm not sure whether, how to, how to access that. If I have any guidance, I would appreciate it. Yeah, yeah. How do I advance that?
Okay, you'll just.
Click it, may I go?
Yeah, you just click right or left.
Okay, perfect, all right. Thank you very, very much for that assistance, which I greatly needed. I'll begin by saying that an economic.
Your mic is a little closer.
Let me begin by saying that an economic development project is quite different from a football game, where there's a winning party and a losing party. With a well-designed and thoughtful economic development project, all participants can be winners. And having evaluated the project and participated in the negotiations, which will lead to the consideration of council action following the second public hearing, I'm here to tell you that, in our professional opinion and judgment, the proposed project plan is a very desirable step for the City of Stillwater. We are in the fortunate position of having a proposal for the development of a data center, which will consist initially of two phases for development, and potentially four additional phases. Each phase will require an investment of about $500 million, so the first two phases will bring that aggregate investment to approximately $1 billion. What is requested and what is authorized under the proposed project plan is a tax, ad libum tax exemption for the real estate and the business personal property involved in that $1 million worth of development. In return for that, as you will see, there are certain significant considerations which will benefit this city and the community at large. The request by the development company is for a 100% tax exemption utilizing the powers granted to cities under a 1990 amendment to the Oklahoma Constitution and the 1992 Development of Oklahoma's Local Development Act. Prior to that time, cities had virtually no resources and no authorized legal means to undertake economic development projects. Their ability to raise revenues was extremely limited. What that constitutional amendment and the Local Development Act, adopted by the legislature, provided was an opportunity for cities to engage in economic development funded by some of the new taxes generated by new development, or to grant exemptions to generate that new development. What is proposed here is a tax exemption of this very substantial development, but in return for that, utilizing these legal powers, there will be financial obligations to flow to the benefit of the city and to each affected taxing jurisdiction in the community. The entities to be benefited will be every affected taxing jurisdiction, which includes public schools, the county, Meridian Technology, the county health department, and certain provisions will enable the city to undertake a wide range of economic development activities. This proposed development is located south of Richmond Road and to the north of East Airport Road. It consists of about 386 acres. The project plan would establish six tax increment districts, but initially, the proposed economic development agreement, which will be considered at the same time as approval of the project plan, will only fully authorize the development of the first two phases, so that the city reserves the opportunity in the future to negotiate the terms for the development of each of the potential additional four incentive districts and data center development phases. Under the project plan, the development company will make payments in lieu of taxes, which will amount to about $827,000 a year, to be allocated among the taxing jurisdictions in proportion to their most recent allocation of property taxes. What this will amount to for these taxing jurisdictions is a total sum of approximately $26 million over the 25-year period of the tax exemptions. In addition to that, there will be a $132,000-plus annual payment, called a community betterment payment, to the city, which may be used in connection with its economic development efforts. A third financial benefit that will flow to the community would be the payment of a 3% franchise tax on the electric power services to be provided by OGN E, which is subject to an approval by a vote of the citizens, I think is what it's scheduled for November the 5th. I won't go through the full breakdown of these revenues, but this shows the allocation, and that $26 million over the 25-year period is allocated among the taxing jurisdictions, with the greatest beneficiary being the Stillwater Public Schools. And that's particularly noteworthy because these payments are not tax revenues, therefore they are not subject to the same restrictions as tax revenues, and these entities may use those revenues with a higher degree of discretion, and it represents a much more significant revenue benefit than would be an equivalent tax payment directly to the public school system, and that is in part because local improvement in tax revenues to your school district results in significant offsets in the revenues that are provided by state school aid. So that the net benefit to the public school system will be most, most significant and highly beneficial to this community, enabling it to do things it could not otherwise do. The 3% franchise tax will come to the city as additional revenue, and since the city will not have costs to be incurred in furnishing that electric power, that too can form a part of an economic development budget contained in the project plan, which will be allocated to various budgetary categories and enable this community to undertake endeavors to pay significant returns over the 25-year period of the tax exemptions. What it means is that two phases of the development will yield approximately $111 million in new revenues, which can be used for the authorized economic development purposes contained in this project plan. And that's revenue which would not exist without this development. At the same time, it should be noted that this is a, a very significant benefit to the developer, because they're only paying a small fraction of what the property taxes would be for such a capital-intensive investment. But by comparison, realize that this is a development of vacant land that has no current development programmed for it, and the payments in lieu of taxes only, disregarding the community betterment payment, disregarding the franchise fee revenues. Just the payment in lieu of taxes only will generate as much revenue for the taxing jurisdictions as if you had built, in lieu of each phase, 250 new homes at a price of $300,000 each. So the two phases yield the equivalent of a 500-dwelling subdivision development totaling approximately $150 million. What makes the benefit so significant to the investor developer of the data center is the fact that that development is so cost-intensive. So it gives us the opportunity as a community to generate significant revenues without much in the way of additional cost. You have the impacts, of course, of the additional employees, each phase will generate about 25 high-quality jobs, so maybe 50, maybe a little bit less with the two phases, high-quality jobs, and that will tend to impose some additional burden on the services of the community, and may add some additional students to the public schools. But the additional burden is very modest compared to the wide range of benefits and flexibility that this community will have to make new investments and generate a wide range of benefits going forward. So, our view is that the benefits to the city and the taxing entities are very significant, it's comparable, the deal is comparable to the deals made for development of data centers in other, other states. Without this inducement, this development might well be located elsewhere. The public benefits are extremely significant, therefore, my co-counsel, Lisa Harden, and I, and acting as your consultant, highly recommend and endorse and encourage your approval of this development. I'd be most happy to respond to any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Bachelor. Counselors, any questions at this point?
You know, I think, I would like to highlight something you said and just reemphasize it. As a former school board member, this is a big deal to me, and I think a lot of people in our community, that $624,000 a year going to the school district, you said it already, but I want to say it again. If they collected that through property taxes, there will be deduction in their state aid, and so they would not be seeing as big an impact, because a lot of the state aid's going to go away. They get to keep all their state aid in this scenario and get $624,000 per year, per phase. It's a huge deal for our schools, and I just want to make sure everybody clearly understands that.
I would add to that, that the plan and the economic development agreement that will be proposed for approval also provides for a 1% increase in that payment every year, so that over the period of the tax exemption, the aggregate projected amount to be received by the Stillwater Public Schools from Phase 1 is a little larger than $17,600,000, and for Phase 2, a little greater than $18,700,000. So it is a very significant benefit to the Stillwater Public School System.
And that's not even considering future potential phases 3, 4, 5, and 6?
That's correct, that's just phases 1 and 2. One of the advantages of that is, the city then will have the opportunity to assess this arrangement and this partnership with the data center company, and evaluate and be informed further when it enters, if it can, if indeed it does enter into a supplemental development agreement for phases 4, 5, and 6. 3, 4, 5, and 6. Any other questions?
All right, well, we will move on to the public comment phase of this meeting. Before I open the public hearing, thanks so much, Dan, we'll, we may have, he'll be here to help answer questions if we need.
And I will remain available for any, any questions.
I think we also have a representative of the company here that can help answer questions if we need. And I'll just, just before we kick this off, just kind of as a background on where we've been with this, these, this discussion, so we're looking at this project plan, this project plan would create the six increment districts, it does not, as Dan said, it does not have, there's an actual economic development agreement that the city would sign, that would authorize the actual building of these facilities, which we're just talking about the first two at this point, not all six. We initially had meetings with all six taxing jurisdictions, they looked at this plan as a committee, as required by the state law, they appointed three additional public representatives, who were Pat Darlington, Aaron Wilson, and Matt Sullins, who were appointed as the public representatives to that committee, they considered it together as a group and voted to recommend its approval to the city council unanimously. It was then considered by the Planning Commission here at the City of Stillwater, who considered the plan and recommended its approval unanimously to the city council, and so now we're at the step of public hearings, we're required to have two. We're actually going to have three, because the first one, as Dan said, again, we didn't, the notice didn't get published quite right in the paper, and so we had to do it again. But the first one is for public, the public ability to ask questions, right? So we want you to be able to ask whatever questions you have about the plan, like I said, there are people here who can help answer those, if we can't answer them tonight, we'll certainly do what we can to answer them for you in the future. And then there's a second public hearing, which is on our council agenda for November 4th, and in that second public hearing, the state law says that's where people get up and advocate either for or against, or make their comments. And so, tonight, what we're asking for you to do as the public is to ask the questions that you have. Each person who signed up will have five minutes. If you want to go through and ask all your questions, and then we can answer them afterwards, that's probably the best use of time. If we get into trying to go back and forth with conversation, then it can, it can, we can run out of time for doing that. So, at this point, I will open our public hearing. I did have, let's see, I have, one, two, three, I think I have six, five or six people who are signed up to speak. If you are planning to speak tonight, and you don't know that I have this form in your hand, please go grab one and get it back up here to the table. But first up, in our- But first up in our public hearing, I did open the public hearing, didn't I?
Yes.
First up in the public hearing is Robin Cornwell.
Robin Cornwell, 2223 North Crescent Drive. So I was at the previous hearing, which I guess, okay, so I'll just reiterate what, something that I said there, and then I do have a couple of questions. I'll start with my couple of questions. So regarding the timeline, just, just reiterate, or, you know, let me know, the first thing that will happen, well, a lot has already happened, but after the public hearings, the city council will vote to accept the project plan? And then the taxing entities, the county entities, will vote individually?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay, so the project won't move forward until all that happens? Is that correct?
In this type of, and I told you we were going to do this, but yes, in this type of plan, each of the taxing jurisdictions also has to approve the tax incentive.
Okay.
So in our other tips that we've done previously, that didn't have to happen. In this one, each taxing jurisdiction, their board will meet to individually approve the tax.
Okay, okay, okay. And I think what I read is that that needs to happen within 60 days of your approval.
I think that's true, but Dan can jump up and tell us if that's not. He's saying that's true, yes, 60 days.
Okay, very good, very good, thank you. So my other, my second question is pretty general, but, you know, we've heard a lot about the benefits. What are the risks? What's the, what's the worst thing that could happen? And then I'll go ahead and say my statement that I was going to say, and maybe you all can talk a little bit about risk.
Okay.
Okay, so I am concerned about the use of fossil fuel energy for the data centers. We know that data centers use a lot of electricity. I recently read a statistic, this was in an article in the Wall Street Journal last week or week before, and the statistic is from the Electric Power Research Institute. It says data centers could use as much as 9% of U.S. electricity by 2030, so that's a big jump in electric power. And I'm concerned that that power is coming from, continuing to come from fossil fuel energy. I know OG&E, or according to their website, they offer wind and solar options to residential customers, and they offer solar power to businesses, but to my knowledge, OG&E has not made any assurances about that the power for the data centers will come from clean energy sources. I'm in favor of economic development, but I'm inclined to vote no on giving OG&E the franchise unless they can make some commitment about, to clean energy for the project.
Thank you.
That's everything.
Appreciate you being here.
Thank you. Thanks. I even, I'll just, sorry, a couple more things. So I was looking for a way to send OG&E a note or a comment, and, you know, a lot of us have received these in the mail. I used the QR code, and I did send them a question about this, and I haven't heard back.
Okay.
And just one other thing, you know, in talking to people in my circle about this, not many people are actually talking about clean energy for the project, but people are really concerned about water. They're concerned about how much water the data centers might use, and what happens to the water after it's used by the data center, what happens to the wastewater, and if it's, if it's able to be made usable again.
Mayor, may I?
Please.
Yep. Robin, I'll be able to address some of your questions that might help some of the others in the room that have similar concerns. So as far as the question on risk, there's a couple of things I want to make sure everyone knows. Our city staff has been doing extensive due diligence with the company. Conversation's actually started in December, and they've been meeting weekly, almost month, weekly, multiple times a month to work through all of our capacities, our infrastructure, and so there has been significant amount of hours have been worked with the company to make sure that, you know, the project lines up with our capacities, and we're not putting any pressure on our systems that, that's what we do with any development that comes, but especially one of this scale. The second thing that is a great thing to point out is this is not a venture company that just sets up a data center as cheap as it can for bitcoining or bitmining. This is a large-scale, high-quality company that has a history of building these high-quality, large-scale data center facilities. They are the end user, and they're the ones creating it. So it's not one that's being built cheaply and then sold off to the lowest, or the highest buyer, and that is going on throughout the country, but not here. So that is a little bit to address your question on risk. On water, we can get into some of the water. In the EDA that will be presented to the council is a max usage of 2.7 MGD, that's millions gallons per day, for both phases. That sounds like a big number, and it is for a user. Our current water capacity rights on Call Lake is 50 MGD a day. The most we've ever pulled as a city is 14 MGD. Our average throughout the year is 7 MGD. So we're significantly under that daily water rights capacity that we have, and this is pulling not even the max that's available in our current system. In that area of the town, we have approximately 3.2 MGD available per day. They're only being able to, and that is the max they can pull if they build both buildings. That's the max they can pull for both buildings is 2.7 MGD. So that's falling well in our system, and I understand everyone's concern. I agree with energy conservation, all those same things that you're talking about, and we care about all those things from leadership and as a staff. And so we've done extreme due diligence, pushing back and making sure that everything lines up with what our system can currently handle, and anything that they need to bring to the table, our improvements funded by the company. So, oh, and wastewater, thank you. They have, the company uses a very proprietary clean system, and so that the amount of water usage in is not the water usage out, so it recycles. And so there is, they've worked with our wastewater management team to make sure that the clean water falls within the limits of our wastewater current plant. We have more capacity there than they're going to be pushing us. And then future phases, as those develop, as the mayor mentioned, Phases 3 through 6 have a much higher cost and a much higher, on the company to provide those infrastructure improvements that would also help our community, and so that is something that will be looked at and approved by the council at that time. So in a way, there's kind of a pilot for these first two phases, if the council so chooses, and then there can be a decision from a community or from future councils to say, you know, we're not going to develop 3 through 6. But right now, the tax document handles the first six, it covers all six districts, but the economic development agreement that is being considered is just the first two phases, so.
And regarding wastewater, so it sounds like the company will treat the water themselves? Is that what you're, is that what you're?
Well, do you want to keep doing questions? Are you okay?
Yeah.
Sorry, my time is up. Yeah, that's okay.
What they discharge will be, will be able to be discharged straight into our wastewater drain.
Okay.
And that is all.
They won't be discharging anything that requires any additional treatment.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And that's heavily tested by DEQ, our engineers, that's all monitored, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Robin.
Let's see. Anything else anybody wanted to answer in terms of her questions, additional comments? Next up, I have Henri Wahara.
Good afternoon, Mayor, good afternoon, Mayor, counselors and city staff. Henri Wahara, 1911 East Kelsey. I'm here not to support or oppose the proposed data center project, but to ask for more information or details of the plan to be able to make an informed decision. I have questions that I would like to see answered prior to the OG&E franchise vote in November. The major concern I have is similar to what Robin just mentioned, which is this project, the impact this project will have for future environmental issues that might harm our community, our state, the country, the planet. The massive amounts of power and water consumed are difficult for me and the general public to really comprehend. As an engineer, my understanding is that AI data centers consume somewhere on the order of six to 12 times the amount of a conventional data center with power fluctuations that are much more volatile. I don't know what size or type of data center is being proposed, but if it's for AI, for one of the hyperscalers like Amazon, Google, or Microsoft, are we looking at 250 to 500 megawatts for one data center? If this is the case, we're talking about one data center consuming significantly more power than all the power that the city uses, and all the power that the city purchases in one year. Even the power consumed by a 50-megawatt data center would be comparable to the city's usage. That's, and I suspect that if it's AI that they're considering, it's going to be, it's going to be more than 50 megawatts. I believe the power and water consumption figures that the developer has provided to the city should be made public. I'm sure you have those figures. I mean, in order to be able to forecast what the city has to do for infrastructure and support of the project, you would have those numbers. Based on Mayor Joyce's remarks in the August 9th city council meeting, is it correct to assume that the first two phases of the project will max out our ability to provide water to the development? I think that that's what you had mentioned, or somewhere like that. In any case, if that's the case, I'm just wondering how we arrived at these numbers and what, if there's an amount of buffer that was assumed for contingency purposes. I'd like to know if the developer has any plans to offset the carbon emissions from this project through any renewable power purchase agreements with OG&E or other power providers elsewhere. It would be much easier to justify supporting this project if such a commitment did exist. It would be very nice if we could try to negotiate something like that. I know that if it's someone like Amazon, or Microsoft, or Google, they are very benign citizens of the planet, and they actually do do that with other of their data centers. They have made an effort, and Apple also, they go out and do power purchase agreements for renewable energy to offset the carbon emissions of their data centers. I'm hoping that they'll do that for us. One basic question I have is whether the deal that's been negotiated is fair to the community, or are we selling ourselves short? I understand that the economic development representative mentioned that this deal is comparable to other data center development agreements. It would be helpful to see the data supporting this statement, or at a minimum, be provided with a range from low to high for a project of this size. It really would be nice to see some amount of supporting data that would give us more confidence that this deal is fair and equitable, because I know that the city is very motivated to try to get more revenue, raise more revenue from projects like this, but I just want to make sure that we're not just going down, trying to be the lowest common denominator against other communities from other parts of the country. I had a question about franchise fee, how that was determined, and you answered that you're doing a 3%. I'm just wondering, is that a, is that a standard rate, or how was that determined? I understand that the city will receive a franchise fee and community betterment payments, but I haven't heard what expenditures the city will need to do, provide to support this project. Obviously, there will be infrastructure improvements needed for the site, including roads, water, power, grid, transmission, et cetera. I'm wondering who will be paying for these costs, if it's the city? I assume there's a forecast for these costs that can be provided to the public. Related to this are the following questions. Will the transmission of power to the site be using any SUA assets? What impact will this project have on the SUA local grid? Will there be any grid fluctuation issues?
Thank you, Henri.
And just one other thing, wanted to find out if there's going to be any water infrastructure impacts on water infrastructure assets with the water treatment plant. I think you tried to answer that just in the previous, anyway, thank you very much.
We can, those are actually the easy ones to answer. Thank you. So I'll go down through here real quick and just try to answer a few of those, and then you guys can jump in if you have additional. I mean, regarding my comment about maxing out our ability to provide water, I think the comment was related to the fact that we can handle the two, initial two phases. If they were going to build the third phase, that will require expansion of our water resource availability, which, to answer sort of all the questions you kind of had there at the end about our additional infrastructure costs, all additional infrastructure costs that would be required because of this project are on the developer. That's in the economic development agreement. Any expanded infrastructure, the grid, water, if they require, if they were going to build Phase 3 and they needed more water, they'd have to pay for the infrastructure necessary to get that water here, or expand our plant, or whatever it is that has to be done. If it is because of the needs that they have for their facility, it is, it's their responsibility to pay for. So, you know, what Brady was saying about, you know, they fit within our, the first two phases fit within our current water resource availability, we still have room in that water number for other normal growth in the city, but another huge load would probably get us to the point where we'd have to expand water infrastructure. So if it's them, it's their responsibility. If we had some other big industrial user that came in and said they wanted, you know, a million gallons of water a day, we would have to figure out how we would handle that. We would, you know, that would require expansion, which, again, as Brady said, the water rights we have available are much higher than the actual ability we have to get it out of the lake and get it treated here in Stillwater. So we would have to expand our plant and expand our pipeline in that, in that, in that scenario, but again, that's growth, that's a good thing. That's why our predecessors 40 years ago made the really good decision to secure 50 million gallons of water, knowing that we were using four at the time. We have the space to make that growth, and if we need to, if this developer requires that additional capacity, they'll pay for it. Commitment to purchase carbon offsets, we certainly, I mean, I think it's a good idea to go back and say, hey, can we get some sort of assurance that they would do something like this? I agree with the concerns around wanting to have this to be a clean energy project. I'm not sure that, I think in those cases, even the ones that you mentioned, I'm not sure that's something they commit to do upfront. I think that's something they come and do afterwards, but we'll certainly look into it, for sure. Is it a good deal for the community? I think that's a really good question, and I think that's a question that all of us who have been working on this and looking at for the last couple of months at least, if, you know, going back to pre-pandemic when this conversation first started, you know, that's a question we try to answer every time we have any kind of economic development incentive, right? Are we incentivizing something that is going to be a net benefit to our community? Are we giving them more than we have to to be able to get them here, right? We want to basically be, what's the bare minimum we have to do to make this thing happen? And certainly, in this process, I can tell you, we have done a lot of work to identify other data center projects around the country, to identify what their taxing incentives have been, to figure out how they compare to ours. It is an incredibly complex question to try to answer, because every state and every location does taxes differently. Some states don't tax personal, business personal property, some states do, like Oklahoma does. Some states don't have the franchise fee, or they're not paying a franchise fee on power, and so trying to accumulate all the different pieces of money that would be coming back to the city versus the tax incentives that we're offering, you know, it's tough to do, right? There was just one that one recently signed in Tulsa, which was probably the best comparable because it's close by and they're running by the same numbers, and so we looked at that agreement as much as we could to try to figure out what percentage were they getting back. I think overall, what you see in data center deals around the country is about a 30% to 40% return to the city, so about a 60% tax rebate for most of these data centers. If you add up all the different things that are, some states, that's just a 60% tax rebate, and that's all they're getting. Some states, like what you're seeing in Oklahoma, is 100% tax rebate, but then there's pilot payments made back and their franchise fees. payments made back and their franchise fees made back. The best we can do the math, it's all a little bit, you know, depends on what, how much power is actually sold and all that sort of thing. This is about a 30 to 35% return back to us from the taxing, from what we're, what we think we're be giving up. But again, you're estimating a lot of numbers there, right? So it's very, it's a difficult, a bit of math to do. But I will say that the amount of time and energy, you know, we have had company representatives that came here to City Hall, sat down, had this negotiation about what that franchise fee was going to look like, push that, we wanted to push that higher. We've pushed back on a number of the, the financial parts of this deal, and I think even where we are right now, where we're only looking at the first two phases, and authorizing the build of the first two phases was part of our negotiation to say, hey, we want to actually see this in action before we commit to allowing the, the full six phases to be built. So it's a, you know, it's a good question, and we certainly, I mean, it's hard to, you know, publish a sheet that shows all of this stuff, because some of it, for one thing, for the folks who are negotiating these things are subject to non-disclosure agreements under a, under a, you know, the fact that this is still in evaluation phase, and so we can't, and that the company doesn't necessarily disclose all of its proprietary use of water and power and how much and all that kind of thing. We get sort of big round numbers that say, we need probably about this much. So what I will say about all that, Henri, is that we, Dan and Lisa are the two preeminent economic development lawyers in the state of Oklahoma. The work that Brady has done as, as sort of our lead on this over the last several months in doing the research around other states and other cities to see what these, to see what these deals have been. I, I trust the advice we're getting right now. I certainly understand the question, and we certainly would, would love to sit down and talk to you more about what numbers we, we do have and what we can share. But I do think it compares favorably with what we've seen around the country. And I think it, again, if you're comparing it on that scale, yes, I think we're getting the similar deal that you would get from, that they would get somewhere else. If you compare it to what's happening in Stillwater right now, on this specific 360 acres of land, it's a fantastic deal, because that's state-owned land. We don't get any money. We don't get any, any state tax off of that, that land at all. And Mr. Bachelor's comparison of saying each phase is like building 250, $300,000 homes, that's not happening on that land anytime soon. And so, yes, there are, I mean, I think, as, again, as Brady said earlier, we, we have been very cognizant of the potential risks here, and especially those risks, to sort of tag on to what Ms. Cornwall asked earlier, those risks are, have been mainly on our side focused on making sure we're not overtaxing our, our infrastructure. And I will just say that I think the, the work that has been done by the team that we've had here doing it has not left any rocks unturned over. That's not the right way to phrase that, but you know what I mean? Unturned, yeah, anyway. So, again, there's more conversation to be had there. I'm, I'm sure we can, we can try to answer some more of those a little bit more in depth, but I, I do think it's a good deal. Anybody want to add anything to that?
You made the note, and I did too. Henri, thanks again for your comments. The 3% franchise fee that you asked about is very similar to the 3% franchise fee that we have with Oklahoma State University, and we also went through a similar process of the vote of the people in order to authorize O G and E to serve the OSU campus, and we receive a 3% revenue as a city. And as far as the question about, is it our infrastructure, our transmission lines? No, it will not be. The S, SUA, the, we, the SUA has the ability to still serve the site for mid-level voltage, you know, the security lighting, the lighting, the office lighting. But as far as the transmission lines and the cost of that, that is all on O G and E, that is not on the back of our ratepayers here at the city of Stillwater. There is no additional taxes, fees, or anything related to the project as far as on the electric grid side. It's solely on O G and E. And Sean is here, the attorney for the company, he may be able to answer some of the questions on renewables, but that may be something we follow up, like the mayor mentioned, after more can be revealed, I guess, of the company name.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's, we'll work on that. That's a great idea.
We will absolutely follow up on that, yeah.
Brad Sherman, did I get that right?
Yes.
Sherman?
Thanks for your time. Let me get my glasses out, I'm getting too old. Couple of questions I have is basically also, has already been covered, is like the infrastructure. My concern is that we'll put in phase one, phase two, and then turn it right around and face, going forward, the company will come back and say, I need more infrastructure. We've already got the, you know, facilities here, and a lot of city councils or governments have, have kowtowed to that, and so we're always being stuck with more infrastructure.
Should come on, get, come on the city council, make sure it doesn't happen.
Yeah, I would, I would love to. I guess I'm, I'm too argumentative for that sometimes. One, the questions that I have, well, one of the first ones is that I, part of this, part of this process is that the people are playing cat and mouse with multimillion-dollar, billion-dollar companies. I prefer to see, have them come and present their plan to the, to the people, not behind closed doors to the city. It's not that I don't trust you guys, but like one of the questions I have is, how big is phase one, building space? How big is their data center? It's called a raised floor, opposed to how big the building is. Are we talking 50,000 square feet, 100,000 square feet? We don't, we as people don't know the size of the building, so we don't know what the infrastructure is going to be needed in power.
So that is in our project plan, it's been posted on our website for, in over, for a couple of months, and it's 300,000 square feet per building.
Right, but I keep being, what I'm reading, that's proposed. You know, I can propose a million-square-feet house.
Sure, absolutely.
So, so that's reason, the, the company, I think, owes the citizens a better refined of what they're talking about putting in. And I understand that it's, it's proprietary information, they don't want their competitor fang, you know, trying to figure out what it is. So you're doing that cat and mouse to us. I think some of the citizens need to know that beforehand. The next question I have is kind of along that line, is when is the anticipated start date for building and what's anticipated completion date? Are we talking them building out in 10 years, or are we talking about them building out in six months? I know those are kind of unrealistic timeframes, but what timeframes are we looking at? There's a 25-year timeframe for the pilot, so, you know, what, what constraints are we having? Because it's, it's known that companies come in and say they want to be operational in a year timeframe, and we're looking at two years down the road, nothing's happened. For example, the new plant that's going out where World Color Press used to be, they're supposed to be in already production now, and from my understanding, they're not in production or even close to getting in production, and they're already a year behind. The water usage is the other question I had, which has kind of been answered, that the city has capacity and has further capacity for like, say, three, but not four, five, and six. Also, I would like to make sure that if they're somewhere in the contract, that when we do get there, you guys are telling me, and I, and I believe you guys, that they're responsible for the infrastructure going forward. That's something I'd like to see more refined and written, so when they come back to us in phase three and four, it's like, you've already said that you're going to be putting in power and stuff. I know a lot of data centers, and I have experience in software and, and data centers, I know a lot of the data centers have multiple sources of power. So if O G and E's main line happened to go down, you have a secondary, secondary source of power. Is Stillwater going to be a secondary source? There's going to be a single-source power company?
Yeah, for that high-level voltage.
Okay, that's.
With backup generators.
Yes, with backup, but a lot of them will have a secondary power in case O G and E's plant burns down, they have a secondary source. And also for the infrastructure, for internet connectivity, do we know who they're going to use? Are they going to use any, any Stillwater facilities for any of that? Okay. A lot of data centers use gray water for the, for the water, they're not using pure water. Do you know if they're going to be using any gray water? Which gray water is? It's water that's made at the, at the wastewater treatment plant. It's portable, but not necessarily drinkable, so a lot of data centers are using that as an offset. Do they plan to be doing that?
We don't know.
Okay, see, see, to me, that's, that's a big.
Well, no, the first, the, in the economic development agreement, it's clean water. That number I mentioned was 2.7 MGD of clean water. So they're designing their facility around that.
Okay, because that's a question that, that could help us get around a water issue. And I always keep hearing, I've been back in Stillwater for about five years, and since I've been here, it's, the sky is falling down, we don't have infrastructure for water, our pipes are freezing, they're breaking, we don't have all the pumps, we don't have enough power for the city, but now I'm hearing that we have plenty of extra resource. So it's kind of like the sky is falling, kind of a, of a thing.
Yeah, sure.
The other question that, that may not be able to ask, be answered, is that what is the delta of the taxes that they're not paying, but they're paying in pilot? I haven't heard, you know, I understand they're getting a sweetheart deal. We want to give them a sweetheart deal, we want them here, but the delta. The last question that, that I have, and I don't know how true this is, I looked up the, since we don't know who the company is, I looked up the LLC through the Oklahoma Corporation, and I noticed that the Kipper LLC that keeps being thrown around, is actually registered as a, as a foreign light, foreign light, a foreign LLC.
Okay. We can answer that.
Okay, so that's all I have, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Well, a foreign LLC means it's not, that company's not based in this state.
You're right.
It doesn't mean foreign, it doesn't mean it's based somewhere outside the country, it just means that, that LLC was not formed in the state of Oklahoma. It was formed in another state and registered in the state of Oklahoma.
Correct, it's, it's registered in Delaware, but addressed in Oklahoma City.
Yeah, that's what's called a, they refer to that as foreign.
Okay, that's what you brought up last, because I didn't understand, for sure.
Again, just to try to run through a couple of these, I mean, I, I understand the concerns around not having the information about the, the business itself, and exactly how they're going to build, and exactly what they're going to do. I, I mean, I think a little bit of that goes to the fact that our job as the city is not to run their business for them.
True.
We're not providing them with business startup funds, we're not, you know, I mean, we're not investing in their business and how they're building this center.
Well, we are by not giving them tax, sorry.
I understand. What we're doing is providing a tax incentive for the investment of money in a, in a piece of land. They're going to invest, the plan talks about is the investment of a certain amount of money. We're not going to dictate exactly how they design a building, or exactly which, you know, which method they use to cool whatever. Initially, we're talking about clean water, but that, you know, potentially could be different in phases two, or three, or four, right? If they come back and they say, well, we want to do it different this phase, okay, we'll, we'll talk about that then. But our job is not necessarily to help them design the data center, it's to say, you know, if you're going to build a facility like this on this land, here's what we're able to incentivize you to do. So some of that is that, is, is, is the fact that we don't necessarily, our job is not necessarily to get into the weeds of exactly how every switch is going to get flipped. All that being said, we're also, you know, we're in a competitive, they're in a competitive environment, we're not going to, they're not going to disclose all that particular information to everybody publicly. Like you said, their competitors are, are interested in that kind of thing, and, and that's just the fact of the matter. That's just how these things work. And I, I've said this to several people, you know, over the course of this whole thing, and with our other tax incentive deals that we've done in Stillwater, I don't really like giving tax incentives. I don't really like the idea of saying that, hey, you, you can play less taxes if you want to come here. It's the world we live in, right? I don't like federal earmarks in Congress either, but it's the world we live in. And if, if we're not going to take, if we're not going to play in that game, this data center will get somewhere, built somewhere else, and the benefits that that community gets, that they will get. And, you know, what we didn't talk about a lot in the, you know, initially in this, this thing, we're talking about $111 million in projected city revenue over the next 25 years, just from these first two phases. Almost all of that is dedicated to public facilities, it's dedicated to things like parks, and libraries, and swimming pools, and public facilities that we do have struggle, we do have a struggle with funding. And so that is money that we as a community absolutely can use and will use well, and if we don't, if we're not willing to be a part of how these things work, you know, then we just won't get them. And that's fine, if that's a community decision we want to make, we don't want to play the game, okay, but, you know, we just broke ground on the $30 million airport terminal that is partly funded by federal earmarks. And, you know what? If we're not getting it, then that money's going to build an airport terminal in California. So it, it's just, it is, some of that's just part of, part of how, what we're, what we're, you know, dealing with in the, in the, the world we live in. Water, just to address the, the sky is falling water issue, the concerns we have about our water infrastructure here in Stillwater, what we're raising money, federally earmarked money sometimes to help with our water infrastructure, is really about the redundancy of our water supply, which is something we've talked to this company about. They understand the fact that we have one water line that comes down from Call Lake, that if there are problems with that one water line, that, that, that causes a problem for our water supply. So our, our major concern right now is funding to create redundancy in our water supply so that all 50 million of those gallons can get here, and that we're, we're creating some local storage so that there's backup and that sort of thing. Expanding our water plant, you know, all of those things actually kind of dovetail with this project, right? Because as they grow, if they do grow, you know, to those next phases, they'll actually be able to help provide some of the investment that we're going to end up needing anyway to make those expansions and make that redundancy in our, in our water line. So it's actually a, this project fits in kind of well with, with the kinds of water projects that we're actually already trying to raise money for. So, great questions, really appreciate the, the conversation about them, but, you know, hopefully that's a little bit additional information there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Ophelia B. I live here in Stillwater. This is my first time talking at a meeting like this, so.
Welcome.
Sorry if I'm a little awkward, but I just have a couple of questions, and I kind of want to echo some things that other people have already said. So to start with, why are the voters expected to vote on this without us being provided all of the information? And will we be provided this information before the vote? Because it would be nice to see breakdowns of numbers and to know exactly which company's coming in and things like that before we actually put our votes on paper. That way, you know, if we, that way we won't regret our votes after the fact, if we do vote yes for it. Because I do like the idea of the money coming into Stillwater and helping with the school system, but there's a sense of morality that goes with that, that can't really sell our soul to the devil to get better schools. So that's kind of on my mind there. And then another thing is just echoing the concerns about green energy. I, I know we've already heard it a bunch of times tonight, so I don't have much else to say on it, but just want to say that is a concern. And then the last thing is, is this a pathway for, in the future, outside companies to come and try to take over the Stillwater Power Grid? Because, yeah, that's not an immediate concern with this, but having a company come in that this close to the city seems a little sketchy in my mind, but I don't know how all of this works, so I just wanted to bring up that concern so that if it is foolish, then it can be wiped away.
Sure.
So, and I'll yield the rest of my time on this.
Thank you so much, thank you for being here. In terms of information for the vote, so there is a vote. The only, the only public vote that is a part of this project is a, a vote on November 5th for, to grant O G and E a franchise to serve this development, this specific development, and only this specific development. The vote, passing or failing, doesn't necessarily approve or disapprove of the project itself, right? I mean, if, I mean, we have, I don't know, we've really talked about this, but if for whatever reason the people of Stillwater don't want to grant O G and E the right to serve it, Stillwater Power could still serve it, we could still do the project, right? The, the project is not dependent necessarily on the vote. The company has requested the option of using O G and E, and for them to have the option of using O G and E, we have to be able to grant them a franchise agreement. Stillwater's a public power community, so anytime anybody in the city of Stillwater, other than Stillwater Power, serving any piece of property in the city of Stillwater requires us to vote to give them a franchise agreement. And we can do that in a very specific, limited way, like I think Brady mentioned earlier, we've done that before with OSU. OSU was served by O G and E. I don't know when that vote was, I don't, none of us was.
2007.
Okay. And we granted that specific right for O G and E to serve on, on campus, and then the city of Stillwater receives a 3% franchise fee. So in this case, the vote is just, if this thing gets built, do you guys agree with, or do you support the idea of O G and E being able to serve that facility and the city of Stillwater receiving a 3% franchise fee? The only information you really need is that, I mean, not to say that, you know, we're, we're having this full conversation, but in terms of that vote, it really depends on, does this project get built or not? And if this project does get built, is it okay if O G and E serves it? That's, that's the question on the ballot. Again, it doesn't really, it's not, do I like the project, do I not like the project? Am, am I, you know, going to support this or not? It's just, if this thing happens, should O G and E serve it? We, I mean, I, I'm pretty positive about that idea, because it does take the, the burden off of Stillwater Electric Utilities service and. off of Stillwater Electric Utilities service and our people in town, and if there's an outage, they're not going to be out there trying to get this data center back up, they're going to be able to focus on other things. It also, you know, as we said, the 3% franchise fee is basically a payment for the ability for OG&E to use our public rights of way and the sorts of things where they're going to have to put polls, but really, there's not a lot of cost in it for us. It is a, it is a pretty clear, just a 3%, it's like collecting a tax that we get to then put into our public infrastructure, we get to go build things with it, we get to improve our city with it, and so, and it really, it doesn't cost us a whole lot, doesn't cost us much at all to do that. So I, I actually really am excited about the idea that we would give OG&E the right to come serve this, this, this project. But honestly, even if you're 100% against the project, you're still going to have the opportunity to go vote and say, well, if this thing happens, which I hate, I still think we should get the 3% from OG&E off of it, right? I mean, so you can still vote yes, even if you hate the, even if you hate the project, or, you know, again, the other way, if you really love the project and you really want Stillwater Electric Utility to supply it, I guess you could vote no, but it's not a, it's not a vote on the project itself. Hope that makes sense. Pathway into the Stillwater for other companies, I mean, again, that's, it's always going to be a question, right? I mean, you know, anytime a council's going to have to deal with a project like this where somebody's saying, I want to use somebody else's power, we're going to have to make that decision. And we just, we just proclaimed it Public Power Week here in the city of Stillwater, which is sort of ironic that we're having this conversation, but, I mean, I also really love the fact that this is a public power community, right? I mean, from a home and a business standpoint, our power crews here are fantastic, they do a great job, they're responsive, we're not waiting for somebody from some other community to come provide power to us. Stillwater Electric Utility's been around since 1901 and does a great, great job of providing power to this community, that's not going to change. Voting yes on that will not have any effect on Stillwater Utility Authorities, or Stillwater Electric Utilities' ability to serve this community well and continue to do what it does. All of us are still going to be paying the same bill to the same people and relying on the same folks to come fix our power. It won't have any effect on Stillwater Electric Utility.
And I'll add that, because the question was, is could this be a pathway to some outside company taking over our electric grid? The answer is no, because for anybody to come in and serve inside our city, there still has to be a citizen vote to allow that to happen.
Good point.
So there's no way that allowing this to happen on that parcel of ground of 320 acres or whatever it is, they can't go one foot outside of that zone with another vote, without another vote of the people. Okay?
Yeah.
And, and back to Henri's question about risk, and Robyn's too, about the due diligence that we have, the amount of hours we have put in even hiring consultants to look at the evaluation of SUA serving versus the OG&E franchise, there's been significant due diligence and work on that from the city standpoint in order for us to come to the place where we are with allowing it to go the vote of the people.
Douglas Dollar.
Mayor Joyce and council members, thank you for the opportunity to just say here. There's nothing like being, following so many speakers and have all your thunders taken away, all the sail, oh, the wind taken out of your sail, but by the way, I have a sailboat now. This is my understanding, the project has been planning for a number of years, but little information has been available. There is growing concerns, for example, in Parkview Estates where I live, by people there about the effects of the data center on our community, because it'll be right across the road from us. For example, here's a post just made on the website, or Facebook, by a person. Data centers create few jobs relatively to the, relative to the real estate they consume. Most data centers require few employees and increasing data center automation will shrink workforce even further. Sadly, data centers deplete and contaminate water resources, pollute the air, cause urban heat islands and displaced populations. The reason I read that is because, well, I majored in journalism at OSU and I was a public affairs officer in the Army, and I know how hard it is to get information out, really hard. And this illustrates the way people see that data centers are tremendously controversial. For example, on water, I mentioned sailing, my sailboat's up on Call Lake, I'm very familiar with Call Lake. Enid just, watch their project, Enid just put in a pipeline to Call Lake. Other cities are looking at it, even Norman, our bitter enemy, OU's going to the southeast, won't be that way anymore, but even Norman looked at putting a pipeline up to Call Lake, and we've seen the water going down. We've started reading arti, this has caused me to read articles about the water. Oklahoma, Western Oklahoma at least faces potential future water crisis. I even read an article about, they're looking at railroading water out to the west for the farms. I mean, it's just unbelievable. So I think the water question for the future down the road, we've had communities with water issues here in Stillwater before. I want to go on, because these folks have been a lot better than me in raising the issues. I guess my question then, is there going to be ways, specific questions can be directed and answered? You mentioned a website, and there's been concern about getting information, the city's workers have been very good at answering questions, so what is, make it easy for citizens to ask more about this project? Can they simply, I know there's a city Facebook page, what would you recommend? I'll leave my question at that. What would you recommend we do to get specific answers?
That's a great question.
Okay?
Thank you, sir. In terms of that, contact question, I mean, any one of the city councilors, by email or reach out through social media or Facebook or whatever, if you, if you have a specific question that you can submit to any of the, the city councilors at our webs, at our Facebook, at our email addresses, I'm mayor@stillwaterok.gov, Councilor Clark, Councilor Harden, Councilor Jaloski, Councilor Hawkins, those are all easy ways to do it. City staff, you can email Brady directly as the Interim City Manager, any, you know, we've gotten several emails this week, I'm a couple behind, haven't gotten back to all of them, that emailed me on like Friday and Saturday, but we're keeping up, or I will, like I got one that was a pretty detailed reading of the project plan, which the project plan is posted on our website, if you go to stillwaterok.gov and you just type in the search box "data center," it will bring up the page for this, it's got the project plan on it. And we had somebody that went through very fine tooth comb and checked all the numbers and sent a whole Word document of different questions and different, which I directly sent to Brady and he sent to the law firm just to make sure we had enough people looking at it to make sure we were, and it was great, it was really good feedback and good questions. And so, I would say that's probably the quickest and easiest way to do it, is just send any of us an email, or get in touch with us and ask those questions. I will just say briefly about the Call Lake and water generally, yes, water resource and water availability from a state, the state of Oklahoma and much of the western United States, if not all of the United States, is a, is always a concern. Call Lake is a Army Corps of Engineers reservoir, we have, we were one of the founding members that built that reservoir, and we have 50 million gallons a day in water rights out of it. And when somebody like Enid wants to go tap into it as well, the Army Corps of Engineers does all of the studies that it's got to do to make sure that there is enough capacity in that lake for the long run to be able to, to feed, you know, additional communities. Call Lake has been historically actually the, one of the most resilient, if not the most resilient reservoir in the state of Oklahoma. It sits upstream from pretty much everything else, and so it stays pretty full. We actually haven't, even back in the, what, 10 and 11, when there were really serious drought for a long time, Call Lake was one of the few that really didn't see a whole lot of problem from that drought. So, again, I think this goes back to city leadership 40 years ago, who made very, very good decisions about securing for us a water supply that, I mean, nothing lasts forever, right? But I do, we have, we have water rights, secured water rights in that facility that more than cover what our needs are now as a city, and more than cover, even if this data center builds out all six of its, of its sites, we'll still have plenty of room in our, our daily water rights out of that lake. And it being an Army Corps lake, it is extremely highly regulated, it is extremely heavily studied, they're, they're on that all the time to make sure that they're, that they're not creating too much of a drain or putting too much stress on that reservoir. So, we do have, and this is one of the reasons, a big company wants to put $3 billion worth of development in our city, because we, our city government had the foresight 40 years ago to secure this kind of a, an asset for our community, and it's a fantastic asset. And we, we, I think I certainly feel, and I sure speak to everybody up here, that we feel a great responsibility to preserve that asset and make sure that we're not doing something to it that would somehow hinder our ability to grow in the future, but also recognize the fact that they did that in 1978 or whenever it was initially put together, so that we could take advantage of these kinds of opportunities for our town. We would not have this opportunity if we did not have that facility, and they, they went through the struggle that they went through to build Call Lake and the Call Lake Pipeline, so that when we had an opportunity as a community to see an investment like this, an investment that will bring hundreds of millions of dollars of new revenue to our, to our community, it's, we have the opportunity to at least consider it, right? We would not have this opportunity at all without that. And so, we also, I mean, again, at the same time, say, well, yeah, okay, great, that's, you know, we don't want to just use it all up, and so again, we've been very careful about that, those numbers, but I do, again, feel strongly, and Brady can talk more about our staff and the amount of time they spend analyzing water usage.
And Doug, is your mother Gaila, is that your?
Yeah, how did you know that?
She's called me and we've spent about.
I was getting a call, I think it's from her.
Well, she's called me about three times, we've had probably three hours of conversation, and I love talking to her, and I actually, I just want to say thank you to all, everyone that's talking tonight, and seem so defensive of our infrastructure, because there is no one more defensive of our infrastructure than our water engineers. Candy, Bill Millis, and David Barnes, and like trying to get them to agree to something on our, they are so protective of our system, and so, so much due diligence, they have been working with the, with the engineers from the company, working through all these numbers, and so I want to assure our citizens listening and all those that have been here, and I really appreciate you all being here, our engineering staff that Candy leads is extremely defensive of our infrastructure, and so I do want everyone to know that so much study has gone into this project. The other thing I completely agree with you on is on our increased communication, we've had a lot of people reach out in the last week or two, which I love getting phone calls, like from your mom, and also from emails from citizens. We have, Don Dotson and I met today, and we're excited, we're going to launch a lot more frequently asked FAQs going out on social media, a lot more information about the vote, and a lot more information about, just, just information for the vote. You know, we're not telling citizens how to vote, we're just trying to provide the information so that citizens can make educated votes, and then also just the communication on the project in general. And so, a lot more information is going to be put out on our city's social media channels and website here shortly, so appreciate all your insight and your comments.
Okay, Gaila's my wife, but I'm going to give her a hard time.
Well, look at it. Throw me under the bus, it's fine. Yeah, I'm in trouble. Tell her to call me tomorrow.
Thank you, sir.
I'd also like to add a couple things. Number one, some of us are out meeting with groups and having conversations, and if someone would like to have someone to come make a presentation to their group, one of us can certainly come do that. To, for a moment, to shamelessly plug Rotary, Brady's going to be at Frontier Rotary on Thursday speaking, and by 1:30 I will have a video of that posted to our YouTube channel, and so if you just go to YouTube and search for Stillwater Frontier Rotary, you'll find our video right there, it'll be the first one listed, so that's an opportunity.
While he's doing that, I'll be at the Lions Club.
There you go.
Thursday at noon.
And also, you, wherever Mr. Dollar went, he mentioned Parkview Estates, and I'm assuming that was, was a noise concern, that, the first two phases are going to be built on the far east side of that property, which is, those buildings will be about three quarters of a mile from Perkins Road, so it's going to be a long way from your neighborhood, and plus, keep in mind, these are, these are water-cooled facilities, they're not air-cooled, there are not going to be giant fans on those roofs roaring 24 hours a day. It's going to be a water-cooled facility, so much quieter. The facility has to meet our noise ordinance, light industrial typically is less than 65 decibels is the expectation, this facility is going to be less than 60 decibels. So it's going to meet the light industrial requirements, it's going to be on the far east side of the property, which is not very least, very densely populated at all. We're starting in the right place in terms of making sure everything works the way it's supposed to work.
My turn, 65 decibels, we looked at, see what that was? If you're in your car going 60 miles an hour with the windows up, that's the sound in your car of 65 decibels, so it's not very loud.
I think the other thing there, when you're thinking about sound and noise, is it's 65 decibels at the source, and as you move out from that, that gets softer by quite a, quite a bit. I think, I'm so grateful to all the community members that came out. Oh, we do, we have one more? Oh, sorry. Should I say not now? I was going to just say that, because I think all of ours so far, I think there is this kind of common theme of stewardship, whether it's our natural resources, like our water, looking at renewable energy, and I think it is something, you know, as Mayor's mentioned and Brady's mentioned, it's something that the team, with the city's team, has been looking at, but I do appreciate your pushing, and I think it's important for us to, as citizens and as leaders, to kind of continue to push as well. I know in my, my work life, I'm very encouraged by the amount of incentives and earmarks that our government is putting out right now to encourage and foster innovation in renewable energy and make that happen. I maybe share your frustration sometimes, that it isn't happening as quickly as we all might like for that to happen, but I do think the opportunities for things like renewable energy on projects this size are, we need more opportunity there, I think the government's trying to make more opportunity there, it's maybe not happening quite as quickly, and it may not be available as fast as we would want it to for these types of projects, but I think it's still our responsibility to push and kind of look at those things. And so I think, right, hearing from you all and asking those questions, I'm not sure, do we answer well enough how people continue? I mean, yes, emails, but is there, I think somebody was maybe asking for a, an easier button maybe for that, I don't know if that's in the plan from a communication, if our website would directly have, there is a.
You can on the website.
Do we have like any FAQs or anything on the website that we could be adding as we get questions and get responses, that we could have?
This week.
This week, okay.
We're launching all of that this week.
Perfect. Okay.
And I know we have one more speaker, but let me just tag on to something that the Vice Mayor said, and just in terms of thanking people for coming out, this is exactly how city government should work, you should come out and you should speak and advocate for what you are concerned with, and so thank you all for taking your time this evening to do so.
And we have one other speaker signed up, and that's Roger Goes. The Boy Scouts picked a good night to be here.
Oh, man. They're getting lots of civic engagement experience.
Again, Roger Goes, 1120 East Cornell. I was here to do what you want done next week, but a question for frequently asked questions. If we could get a ballpark of what it would cost the Stillwater Electric Utility to serve this facility with what OG&E is going to be providing at no cost to us and actually paying us, so, like to.
Good question.
See if we can have that number, thank you.
I thought you were asking us to build a ballpark.
Oh.
Give us a minute.
There is some land out there.
Thanks, Roger. Thank you. All right, I don't have anyone else sign up to speak. I will close the public hearing, or do you want to, before I close the public hearing?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to, in light of the questions, I would like to supplement my presentation briefly. I want to emphasize that we are in the middle of a process, and this is the, really, legally the first official public step for public information. And I know everyone here is interested in openness, and that is the purpose of this hearing. So, we take these questions seriously, but I want to put that in context. There are three parts to the approval process. Following the public hearings, the city council will have to approve three documents. One will be the project plan, the second will be the incentive agreement, which is the city's authorization for the other. the city's authorization for the other taxing jurisdictions to then consider whether they will agree to the tax exemption. And the third action, which must be approved, is the economic development agreement, which spells out the relationship between the community and the developing company that will create this data center. And it is in that document that many of these issues will be addressed. And I want to say that over the years, I and our firm have worked with many communities throughout the state of Oklahoma, and we have been in the forefront of some of the most pioneering economic development efforts in this state. And looking at those experiences in other communities, and what we have observed here over the last few years, working with the city of Stillwater, is that your elected leadership and your city staff have been remarkable in their diligence with respect to this project. They have asked the hard questions, they have searched out the challenging answers, and they have looked for ways to make sure that this community is very fully protected. And many of those protections have to do with the implementation steps. They've been working on it now for the last few years, this is very complex, but there's nothing secret about it. And the relationship will be spelled out in those three documents. I'll give you a, a significant example. There's been some concern expressed about the costs and burden which the city might assume in connection with trying to provide the, uh, water, for example, for, uh, the operation of the data center. The economic development agreement, which is being negotiated and will be considered for approval by this council after the approval of the project plan and in your blessing on the incentive agreement, says, for example, that if this data center development imposes additional demands of capacity on this community, the cost will be borne by the developer company, not by this community. That's an example of how, in the process, your staff and your elected leadership is ensuring that this development does not impose an additional burden on the community. I know, for example, that the company that we are dealing with considers clean energy a very high priority. An appropriate place to express that high priority might be in connection with a special provision in the economic development agreement that acknowledges that high priority, and what they're doing with that high priority is, uh, as was suggested by one of the questioners and one of the speakers, is creating, offsetting clean energy developments and supporting them, uh, to offset the demands created by their developments. We can press for that broad, strong commitment to clean energy in the economic development agreement, and I will, and my firm would be quite willing to recommend that we tender that as a part of the final terms of the agreement, which would later come before you for consideration. Finally, I want to say that in connection with the choices, like OG&E provide the power versus the local municipality and its, uh, utility authority providing the power, the staff and the city leadership has gone through the same kind of very careful analysis before reaching the conclusion that all things considered, the net burden on the community would be less if OG&E provides a service, and it would be more immediately available, and you'd have an assurance that of a new net revenue stream that could be leveraged into other economic developments without an added additional cost of operation for your existing electric power utility. So, these questions are being looked at, and the answers are very thoughtful. And I just want to provide, from our experience and observation, the knowledge that this leadership and this city staff are dedicated servants and in their diligence to protect this community and respond to the kind of concerns that have led to the questions tonight, you are absolutely top flight, and you have our, our unreserved endorsement. And the people should be reassured of, about the kind of leadership and the kind of quality that they have working on their behalf in this community.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I will close the public hearing. Um, again, that's the end of hearing number one. Hearing number two will be November 4th, uh, here at our city council meeting. Uh, I will also just mention that tonight on first read on ordinances and item 10 here, we will have the first reading of the ordinance that would adopt this plan, that is just the first reading of that ordinance, we just got it on tonight so that we can do that, uh, have it done, uh, the first reading of it, and then, we won't do the second reading of that ordinance until after the second public hearing. Uh, we can't do it legally, we can't do this, that, we can't adopt that ordinance without the second, uh, hearing, and so, uh, if you see that on the agenda, or you, when we get to that tonight, um, that's why we're doing the first reading of that ordinance. All right, that takes us to item eight on the agenda, which is general orders. Eight A is the presentation of lead and copper water rule service line inventory by David Barth. Yes?
Don't take it personally, David.
Do what?
They're all leaving, but don't take it personally.
And I'm gonna blame you.
So, now we found out who was actually here for the data center and who was not.
All right, I was told to be brief, so, are there any questions? No, good evening, mayor and councilors, David Barth with Engineering, uh, here tonight to, uh, present to you the lead and copper rule water service line inventory. Um, this is just a presentation, there's no action with this agenda item. Um, also, I just wanted to say this pipe that I'm showing here is not, uh, within our distribution system.
Good.
So, uh, hopefully to shed any concerns there. Um, uh, before I, uh, do this, I just want to say that I'm, I'm the face of this tonight, but this, this was a huge effort by a lot of people, um, in, uh, water utilities engineering, the water utilities department, uh, GIS, and, uh, communications. Um, I, I specifically want to thank, um, Said Nori, who stayed here this evening, and, oh, he's back here, raise your hand, Said. Uh, so, anyway, he's our newest employee, uh, in the engineering team, and, uh, he's actually the person that, uh, helped quite a bit with the map that I'm gonna show you. Also, Ben Jenkins, who actually had to leave, he would've stayed, but, uh, he's got a couple of youngsters at home. Um, uh, previous staff member Roy Hayden, who left us in April, uh, to go into consulting, but he, he was a huge, Candy Starring, my director, who keeps me in, in line all the time. Uh, water utilities staff, James Driscoll, Kelly Hitch, Jackson Dozier, Jason Tyler, Freddie Pitts, uh, Billy Foltz with Communications, who helped with, he created the webpage I'm gonna show you, and then June Gow with our GIS team. So, um, all of those people worked to make this happen. Um, and so, uh, the reason I, I'm here tonight is because we have an obligation to do something by next Wednesday, uh, and so, uh, they just, I just wanted to show it to you all before we did that. Uh, we'll be publishing a webpage, uh, for all to participate and, and, and see. So, anyway, um, two big things to note, uh, there are no, no known lead service lines in our distribution system, um, and the drinking water, uh, that we provide is tested for lead and copper on a regular basis, so, um, and, uh, the bottom there is a timeline I'm not gonna bore you with, but, uh, basically, the, in 2021, the lead and copper rule revision, which was after some things happened in Flint, Michigan, and, and other communities, they passed, the EPA passed this, and that's what, uh, kinda set this deadline for next week, uh, for us to provide this inventory to our, our community, uh, as well as a map, uh, to our community to, to provide more information about, um, lead service lines. So, what is a, what is a water service line? Uh, just brief, uh, briefly, this is a, a picture showing the water main, uh, that would be the, the city-owned water main that's in our distribution system that brings water to businesses and homes, and then you've got a tap that's connected to that, uh, that has two pieces, um, separated by the water meter, and so, the, the piece there between the, the water main and the meter is the, the city-owned or system-owned, uh, service line, and then the, the service line that's connecting the meter to the, the home or the business is, is owned by the customer. So, when you think of a service, there's two pieces of pipe involved there. So, uh, about the city's inventory, we have 18,840 water services, so that means over 30, you know, um, what, 39,000, um, 37,000? I'm sorry, I'm tired, so, uh, anyway, um, uh, water pipe segments, um, that are at each of these, uh, locations, um, whether it's a home or a business. And of those, 18,071 have materials that are considered non-lead, so that would be PVC, HDPE, copper. Um, 278 of the 18,071 of those services have galvanized pipe as the material, so that will be required to be replaced, um, with something that's coming out next year called the lead and copper rule improvements. Um, so right now, we're under the LCRR, which is the lead and copper rule revision. Uh, and then the remaining 778 services have materials that are labeled as unknown. And so, uh, those are unknown because during our visual inspection, we just couldn't determine what the materials were, and so, uh, we have about 1,000 people that will be mailing letters to that are in that, the 278 plus the 778, uh, we have to notify them, um, with a letter saying, you know, that we will, as, can continue to work on our system, we'll try to identify, uh, what these materials are, if you wanna self, you know, if you wanna identify them yourselves, you can, and we'll talk a little bit about that. But, um, we've got the, uh, the lead and copper rule revision webpage that, uh, this is not active yet, uh, on the city website, but I'm showing it to you, uh, this is what it'll look like next week. Uh, so we've got, uh, information about lead, uh, lead service lines or lead, service lines in general, uh, the EPA's lead and copper rule, there's a link over here you can click, and it takes you to the EPA website, you can, um, read all kinds of information about, um, service lines and lead. Uh, the, the biggest piece for us here is this interactive map that we've created, so, um, anybody can, uh, you know, starting next week can go to the, the website, they can click on this. Uh, so we, we took our inventory, uh, we linked it to our GIS, uh, system, and so, over here on the left, we've got, uh, an explanation of, you know, you've got this round circle with, that's split in half, there's, um, the left half is the city-owned, uh, service line, the right half is the customer-owned service line, and these colors were dictated by DEQ, so, um, anyway, green is non-lead, and gray means it's either galvanized, requiring replacement, or it's unknown. And so, um, just wanted to reemphasize, we don't have any known, uh, lead service lines, uh, in the community. So, two things, you can, you can zoom in, you know, like, for example, here's Westwood Elementary, I could zoom in and I could click on that, and it could tell me, um, you know, that it's got, uh, non-lead, material unknown, uh, service line for, uh, for that particular property. You can also go up here and you can type in your address, um, so, you know, I could type in, uh, City Hall, and, you know, um, eventually it comes up, and you click that, and it zooms you over to, to City Hall there. So, anyway, uh, it's an interactive map, it will be updated, um, until we identify all of the, um, unknown, uh, service materials, or, um, and then, as, as well as when things get replaced, so, let me go back to the website. Uh... So, um, the next thing we've got is a paragraph about how we prepared our, our inventory, so, um, just some decisions that we had to make. Uh, the next thing we've got here is a button that you can click, which takes you to a, uh, it's like a survey, but basically, if you wanna, if you had a plumber work on your service line in your yard, and you determined that the material was different than what we were showing on our inventory, then you can report that by clicking here, and it takes you to this, and you, you put in some information about your property and your name and your email, and, and we'll, you know, have to come out and confirm that, and what, what the material was. Uh, the bottom of this, then, is some FAQs, uh, that, uh, you know, would provide more information to somebody interested in learning more about, uh, service lines. And then, at the bottom is the link to our inventory. So, these are the requirements that, uh, that we have with the lead and copper rule revision, is to publish a map, to publish the inventory, uh, to make it available to our public, um, so that they are aware, um, of, of, uh, what, uh, you know, what the service line materials are serving, uh, their homes and businesses. So, uh, what can property owners do if they're concerned about their, uh, their, their service line? Uh, one, you can have your service line inspected by a plumber, um, and tested for lead. You can also, you can have your drinking water tested for lead, um, there are labs in, in Stillwater that you can, uh, use for that service, um, and they'll tell you how to collect the sample and what to do with it. Um, if you detect lead in your drinking water for some reason, you know, if you've got lead pipes in your home, um, or something like that, uh, there are filters that they make that filter it out, you can buy point-of-use filters that, you know, install on faucets, or you can buy pitchers where you put the water in the pitcher, and then, you know, you pour it out of the pitcher and it's filtered. So, there's, there's options there, but, um, let's see, the next... So, um, next steps, we're gonna activate the webpage for public access by next Wednesday. Um, like I said, we're gonna send out about 1,000 notification letters to each of the property owners with services labeled unknown or galvanized, because that's a requirement of the rule. Um, we're gonna continue to update our map and inventory as we gather additional information, and when the lead and copper rule improvements, uh, is adopted, we will comply with that, which means we'll be replacing, um, the galvanized, uh, service lines that are city-owned. Customer-owned service lines, um, we, we won't be replacing, we'll notify people and, and they can choose to replace it. But, um, we will be replacing any, uh, galvanized, or if we determine that there's a, if we find a lead service line, we will replace it, uh, on the city side. So, with that, any questions? Councilors?
Is there anything in this law that would require a homeowner to upgrade their supply line from the meter to the home before they sold their home? Is there, is there anything that the federal government's gonna force that kind of major investment?
I, I have not, and that's a great question, I have not seen the lead and copper rule improvements yet. I, I know that there will be, um, requirements in there for replacing services line, uh, replacing service lines, um, but I, I don't know if there's something that forces them to do that, I think, I mean, obviously, you would have to disclose it, uh, when you sold the property. Um, and, you know, lead service lines are not the culprit here, it's, it's what happens if the water, you know, chemistry isn't right, that, you know, then causes the lead to leach out of the pipe and, um, and then, you know, poison people, so. But yes, that, that's a really great question.
I do think, is there, I, I believe I've read that there's potential funding available for, I think EPA has some funding programs available for, um, line replacement. I'm not familiar whether or not it's for municipalities, or if it's for homeowners, but I'm pretty sure when that rule, um, revision started happening in after the Flint, and I think with the infrastructure bill, there was funding in there for, for, um, line replacement, so maybe something for us to look at, too.
For sure.
Is there anything, I, I couldn't see closely on the map, um, in terms of like the 287, um, pipes that it, where we have galvanized metal? Um, is there a, a specific location where that occurs, or is it randomly throughout town, or is there any rhyme or reason for why that would occur where it does?
Um, that's another great question, I, I would have to, um, I don't know, James Driscoll, um, might be able to lend a, a hand on that one, um, he's more involved with our people that are out in the field.
James Driscoll, our utilities director, very good question, uh, they are a little bit of both, they're scattered, but more concentrated in older parts of town.
Thank you.
That's a ton of work, that's just a ton of work, from, I mean, 38,000 different pipe segments that you gotta identify what the material is, and, um, looking forward to seeing the website and reading some of those, some of that, uh, information about how you guys went on and did all that, but we really appreciate that, that's really valuable information for people in our community. It's great to hear that we don't know of any lead that's out there in any of our lines, but, uh, appreciate the work that you guys are doing to make sure everybody's safe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 8B, approve a professional services agreement with CEC Corporation, Travis Small.
Good evening, council, my name's Travis Small, I'm the, uh, engineering manager for transportation and drainage here at the city. Uh, I'm really excited to be here tonight to talk to you a little bit about the Knoblock Fourth and Lincoln Improvements Project, and to possibly request action by the governing body to approve the professional services agreement, authorize total professional services expenditures, authorize the budget amendment, and- expenditures, authorize the budget amendment, and authorize execution of the professional services agreement with CEC. This slide shows you the project locations involved. And back in two thousand and one, council approved the FY twenty-one pavement management plan, which included the Knoblock project from Fourth to University. Also, SUA in that same year approved a waterline project that coincided with the Knoblock project. And earlier this year, staff came and presented a plan to add additional areas to the Knoblock project, and those locations are shown here. The project does include roadway, water, and streetscaping. This slide shows you the existing pavement conditions as they stand right now. I would like to point out that the red indicates, and for those of you looking on the back, it may look a little more orange, but that's red. The red indicates a very poor condition of the pavement. The darker red indicates a very poor condition. And those also indicate that the pavement needs to be either rehabbed or totally reconstructed. Most of the pavement involved in this project, from the pictures you see here, are leaning more towards the full reconstruction and rehab is not really an economical or a viable option. So staff, understanding what the project was and that I just discussed with you, staff issued an RFP. Four qualified firms responded. Then staff, through a selection committee that was put together, reviewed each one of those submittals, scored them, and through that process, CEC Corporation was selected as the most qualified and responsive firm. The staff then negotiated a contract with CEC Corporation, and that is why we're here tonight. So Shannon Hanks with CEC Corporation is here tonight with me, and we can answer any questions you might have with respect to this.
Counselors?
Mayor, may I make one point of clarification on this item?
Please.
As Travis stated, this project has road, electric, and water involved. Is that correct?
Actually, water only.
Oh, water, okay.
And I neglected, yeah, I neglected to say we have a companion item on SUA. My apologies.
Yes, so the project is funded in part by city funds and SUA funds. So also for your consideration this evening, when we get to the SUA agenda on the consent docket, is approval of the same agreement because it does require approval both by the city and SUA because of funding from both of those entities.
Thank you for clarifying that for me.
I'll add too, it's nice when the data that he showed, the data that's collected during our pavement management plan audit adds up or aligns with the comments and requests that we've received from the merchants around the campus corner and strip area that have asked for these roads to be improved.
They don't like the roads around there?
The roads and sidewalks, especially around campus corner. So I know they're really excited that this project is in the design.
Yeah, absolutely. And it's, I mean, that's a major gateway entry for people coming to town and going down to campus especially. So it'll be really nice to have the streetscaping and the extra stuff as part of this too. And that waterline, Knoblock, is a problem. So it's glad that, I'm glad that we're finally getting to it. Further questions that, or from the council? Do you have a recommended motion for us?
I do. Staff recommends a motion to approve the professional services agreement with CEC for seven-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, seven-hundred dollars. That's a fee not to exceed. This includes six-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand, five-hundred-and-ten dollars for roadway, fifty-eight thousand, one-hundred-and-ninety dollars for waterlines. And as the attorney said, this will be presented in SUA. Authorize a budget amendment in the amount of four-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand, five-hundred-and-ten dollars for transportation sales tax fund, an amount of fifty-one thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty-eight from water fund, again later in SUA meeting, and authorize the city manager and/or general manager to execute the PSA.
Counselors?
I move approval of staff recommendation.
Second?
We have a motion in a second, please vote. It's approved with a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Travis.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask for a two-minute recess?
Um, yeah. We don't have to vote on that? Do we have to vote on that? No, you just run out. I'll move that we recess city council for a few minutes.
Second?
Motion in a second, please vote. Sorry. With a vote of five to zero, or four to, four to zero, we'll be in recess with one no choice.
An update on the Stillwater Animal Welfare Project and approval of a professional services agreement from... Things have gotten out of hand. Candy?
Just trying to be in a hurry. Candy Star, Engineering Director. I'm here tonight to update you all on the Stillwater Animal Welfare Facility and request your authorization for an agreement to proceed with design. This is another project that is being worked on by many departments across the city. Roy Stevens and Rachel Woserman with PD, Dawn Dodson with Communications, Bill Millis and other engineering staff, John McClanny and others in Finance, and of course, City Management, Brady, Christine, Christine, we all come together for these great things that are game changers for the community, and this is one of those examples. So in about March or April, March twenty-twenty-four, we brought you the site selection results for the Animal Welfare Facility, and this green box shows you where the site selection process landed. The items on the left of the slide give you some of the features. It is nearby the terminal, it's right adjacent to Waste Management, and it's a little south and west of Sanborn Lake. Some of the great features of this are the walking trails at Sanborn Lake, which the dogs are of course saying yes, please to that. And the reroute of Hargus Road will add a ten-foot sidewalk on the east side of the road. So that'll be another benefit in the area for walking trails for the animals, for volunteers. The FAA clearance process is still not completely final, but I'm told by Kelly Reed that we're ninety-nine point ninety, ninety-nine point nine percent sure, but I still can't tell you that it's a one-hundred percent. But she has verbiage from FAA reps that say it's going to be okay. And in July, we drafted an RFP for architects, and we received four. We held interviews and the city's team ranked Barrett L. Williamson Architects, who's teamed with Animal Arts, as the highest scoring. And we've been able to successfully negotiate a agreement with them. Barrett is here today and he'll say a few things in a moment. This is a summary of design services fee. Because this project is really, the first phase of this is in support of the GO bond. We're going to do phase one only, and that's what you all are authorizing tonight only. And we will, that will end in a 3D rendering and a budget estimate that we can use for the vote. And then if the vote passes, we will proceed with phase two to do the rest of that. And you'll see the numbers there for the difference in phase one and phase two. In the same way, the schedule is split up in a pause, we'll do schematic design, and that will be complete in January twenty-twenty-five, and we'll pause for the resolution and the vote on April first. And if all goes well, we'll ask to proceed with this phase two. We'll only give that if the bond passes. So Barrett Williamson is here tonight. He's going to say a few things about his firm at Animal Arts, and then we will answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, council, and staff. We've been around for twenty-six years. We're located in the other university city. Please don't hold that against us. We've worked on several animal shelters, and we have partnered with Animal Arts. They are a firm out of Boulder, Colorado, another university town. And they are experts in animal shelter design. They have designed over fifteen-hundred animal shelters throughout the United States and actually across into the Canadian border and I think maybe a couple of other international locations. We're super excited. We actually had a project kickoff meeting last Monday, Tuesday. We've, we've met with Candy and Dawn and the interim city manager. Congratulations, I think. And, but yes, we've been around for twenty-six years. We've got nine staff, and we're very, very excited to work with you guys. And I think your council meetings are great, and I commend you all. This is not a bad council meeting to me in any way. So our main goal is to design with you collaboratively a facility that reflects Stillwater values, that's uniquely Stillwater. And Candy has shared some renderings of your airport facility and Fire Station Number Two and things like that, so that, so that you get something that is uniquely yours. It's going to create shorter stays, it's going to create less stress for the animals, it's going to be an open, inviting place to promote adoption. And I would like to quote a couple of things here. This is from Karen Devison. Saving one dog will not change the world, but surely for that one dog, the world will change forever. And I've got about another fifty of these in here, from Mark Twain to Charles DeGaulle, Will Rogers. We can save those.
You should have led with Will.
Huh? You want Will? If there are no dogs in heaven, then when I die, I want to go where they went.
There you go.
So we'll save the others for the groundbreaking and really look forward to working with you all.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Do you have a recommendation for us, Candy?
Staff recommends a motion to approve the professional services agreement with Barrett L. Williamson Architects Incorporated for a fee of ninety-three thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty-eight related to phase one work. Authorize the city manager to execute the PSA and approve the associated budget amendment for one-hundred-and-three thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty-four, which includes only phase one work in contingency.
Counselors?
Emphatically move to accept staff recommendations.
Second?
We have an emphatic motion and a second. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, item emphatically passes. Item nine, resolutions. Resolution number CC twenty-twenty-four dash thirty, a resolution of the Stillwater City Council adopting the Stillwater Regional Airport Community Participation Plan as required by the Federal Aviation Administration for recipients of federal finance assistance.
Adoption of a community participation plan is required for recipients of federal funds. The purpose of the community participation plan is to meet nondiscrimination obligations to ensure that communities affected by Stillwater Regional Airport projects or operations can be informed and participate in airport planning efforts. Approval of this resolution adopts the plan for Stillwater Regional Airport as required by the FAA. Serge Walzak, Airport Operations Manager, is here if there are questions about the plan.
Anyone have questions about the plan or the resolution? Does anyone have an action?
I move adoption of resolution CC twenty-twenty-four dash thirty.
Second?
Motion in a second, please vote. Resolutions adopted five to zero. Nine B is resolution CC twenty-twenty-four dash thirty-one, a resolution stating the city of Stillwater's intent to reimburse project expenses as required by section one-point-one-fifty-dash-two of the Treasury regulations.
This resolution is related to the city's proposed new animal welfare facility. Should the city be successful in financing the project with a general obligation bond issue, the city is entitled to reimbursement of project costs incurred prior to the issuance of bonds. Approval of this resolution expresses the city's intent to reimburse project costs to satisfy the Treasury regulations.
Sounds like a good idea to me. Comments, questions, action?
Motion to adopt resolution number CC twenty-twenty-four dash thirty-one.
Second?
We have a motion in a second, please vote. Resolution's adopted with a vote of five to zero. Resolution CC twenty-twenty-four dash thirty-two is a resolution accepting beneficial interest in an amended trust indenture, creating and recreating the Stillwater Utilities Authority, and containing other provisions relating thereto. That was creating and recreating, not creating and recreating, right?
Yeah, and City's Bond Council is here to present on these items, Alan Brooks.
Good evening. My name is Alan Brooks. I'm with Public Finance Law Group in Oklahoma City. I came with a cast of thousands over here, so the questions I can't answer, somebody there will. There's several items we're here on this evening that relate ultimately to the refinancing of some outstanding debt obligations you had. As we've been working on this process, we came to the conclusion and working with city staff, this would also be an opportunity to restructure your existing organizational documents, lease agreement, trust indenture, et cetera. So this item basically relates to putting in place a new organizational document relating to the Stillwater Utilities Authority. The existing document is a nineteen-seventy-nine vintage document. It's been amended a couple of times. This will give you the twenty-twenty-four version of organizational documents. We've been working on this, we've circulated it to staff, we've had dialogue back and forth, and we've come to the point where we have a document we're recommending. So this resolution is the city's action to accept beneficial interest relative to that new organizational document.
Counselors, any questions about the resolution?
I will just say that I'm pretty excited about the fact that we're updating some of these documents that have been around for a long time, that have been amended and restated and pulling all of it together and making it, you know, comprehensive with current laws.
Yes, sir.
It's a good thing.
Is there any action on the resolution?
Motion to adopt resolution CC twenty-twenty-four dash thirty-three?
Second.
We're on thirty-two.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution CC twenty-twenty-four dash thirty-two. Please vote. That resolution's adopted with a vote of five to zero. Okay. Counselor Clark is excusing himself. Item nine D, resolution number CC twenty-twenty-four dash thirty-three. This is a resolution of the City of Stillwater, Oklahoma. The city approving the incurrence of indebtedness by the Stillwater Utilities Authority, the authority, issuing its utility system and sales tax revenue bonds, the bonds, in one or more series for the purpose of refunding certain obligations of the authority, providing that the organizational document creating the authority is subject to the provisions of the bond indenture, waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the sale of said bonds by the authority at negotiated sale prices, excuse me, at a negotiated sale and at a price less than par, ratifying and confirming a lease agreement as amended pertaining to the leasing of the city's water, sanitary sewer, solid waste, and electric systems to the authority, and authorizing an amended lease agreement and operation and maintenance contract, approving said authorizing execution of a sales tax agreement by and between the city and authority pertaining to a year-to-year pledge of certain tax, sales tax revenue, approving the... approving the forms of a continuing disclosure agreement and an official statement, and containing other provisions relating thereto.
Chris Gander with BOK Securities and my partner Zach Robinson as well. As you know, we've met with some of you, talked about this, but this is an opportunity to refinance the 2014 A bond. So I was going to walk you through the numbers fairly quickly and then Alan can get back up here and kind of explain the resolution in a nutshell. So with that, we just have two sections here, the existing bonds that are outstanding and then what the new bonds will look like, assuming you all pass this. So the original bond issue that we're talking about was the $61,830,000 Utility System Sales Tax Revenue Bonds, Series 2014A. You closed that bond issue in August 12th, 2014. It was to build the power plant, which has been completed now. Your average rate still outstanding is 4.67% fixed. Your final maturity is October 1, '42. It's prepayable or became prepayable, which means you can pay it off, no penalty. On October 1st of this year, your principal outstanding is $49,880,000 and your average annual debt service is $4,135,000. So that's what you've got right now. So we've got an opportunity to refinance that with some savings. So the new bonds would be par amount of $45,145,000. We're targeting closing December 19th. That may move around a little bit depending on when the audit comes in. One thing I would say is your staff should be very commended on getting your audits done so fast. We work all around the state and very, very few communities can get their audits done before the end of December. And you often get your audits done, Kristi, mid-December and up, which it just makes it our timing on when we want to sell bonds and have an audit come out. So we're going to think through that. But right now, our plan is to close around December 19th. Our estimated rate as of Friday was 3.7%, which would be fixed like your current, which is approximately 1% lower. So you're about approximately 4.7 now. You're going to be going to approximately 3.7. The rate's not locked in until the bonds are sold. So we're, we're hiring an underwriter. They will market the bonds. Our trading desk, along with Zach and I, will be reviewing the pricing, making sure we're thinking you're getting the best rates available in the market on that day. And if there's something that comes up in the market, we'd also advise, let's hold off. Let's, you know, that's our job to help advise you with that. But at the moment, 3.7%. Same maturity date, 42 unchanged. Anticipate as be prepayable. The standard with bond issues is normally 10 years, just like the one you have now. You sold in 2014. It's prepayable in 2024. We're hoping to have a shorter call, like a seven-year call. So that's the intention right now. But once again, probably on the long end, it would be a 10-year. But our goal is to do it as a seven-year. Your average annual debt service would drop down to 382,000. So kind of can go back up to the top. Currently, it's 4 million, and I'm sorry I said that, 3,820,000. It's currently 4,135,000. So it'd be dropping by about 315,000 a year. So it's cash saving. So you multiply that by the number of years, you come up with approximately 5,659 gross. We always talk about present values and we've been hovering around 3.5 million. So right now, we're looking at 3,412,000, which that squiggly line and that 6.84% is approximately 6.84% of your current bonds outstanding. So as a rule of thumb, once you get to that current call date, 3% is where you want to really start considering doing a refinancing and you're above double that right now. So we're obviously recommending that you do a refinancing at this time. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counselors, any questions?
I do have a question. So we have 49, almost 50 million outstanding, but we're refinancing 45 million. Why?
Great question. So I'm trying to figure out the best way to put it on here, but the bonds will be selling at a higher coupon rate, 5%, but there'll be a high premium that the purchasers will pay. So you're going to end up getting 50 million of proceeds, five of that being premium on $45 million worth of bonds. So it'll be, for example, you'll have some, and you have this on the 14 too, you'll have some 5% coupons selling at 4%. So somebody's going to be paying, depending on what year it would be, but they might be paying $1,100 for a $1,000 bond, right? And so when it matures, you only pay that $1,000 back. So you're getting, you're not getting it for free. It's built into the interest rate. But it's kind of like on a mortgage, if you pay for points, effectively the bond buyers are paying for a higher rate, but you're getting the benefit of that premium. So it does look like there's a big discrepancy, but inside our detailed numbers, there's a premium amount you're going to get. So you're really netting about 50 million. Good, good, good eyes catching that.
And I would just thank Kristi and her team and you all for the help. I think refinancing bonds when we possibly can and getting that kind of cost savings that just shows that good stewardship of the public funds that we're entrusted with.
We agree. Thank you. And then so unless you have questions on the number, I'll have Alan come up and explain the details of the resolution.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, the resolution you have in your packet is the beneficiary of the public trust under Oklahoma law. Both the city council's beneficiary and the trust authority itself have to approve the transaction. So this is the approval of the transaction at the city level and authorization of the documents that are, the city is a party to. So I'm happy to answer any questions relative to the resolution, but we'll have a companion item in the authority agenda.
All right. Thanks, sir. Counselors, action on the resolution?
Motion to adopt resolution number CC-2024-33.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, resolution 2024-33 is adopted. Item 10 is ordinances. I guess I should note for the minutes that Counselor Clark didn't vote on that item.
Or participate in any way.
Or participate in any way. Ordinances, item 10 on first read, ordinance 3546, an ordinance approving and adopting the Stillwater Data Center Economic Development Project Plan and Supporting Incentive Districts pursuant to Oklahoma Local Development Act, identifying and establishing six incentive districts, designating and adopting project area and incentive district boundaries, deferring the numerical designations and effective dates for the incentive districts, adopting certain findings, authorizing the city of Stillwater and the Stillwater Economic Development Authority to carry out and administer the project plan, ratifying and confirming the actions, recommendations, and findings of the review committee and the Stillwater Planning Commission, approving and adopting a tax incentive agreement, providing for separability, and declaring an emergency. As we stated before, this is the first reading of this ordinance. It is not an adoption of the ordinance, it's just the first reading. Counselors.
Move to adopt ordinance 3546 to second reading.
Let's try that one again.
Move to advance. Did I use the wrong word? Move to advance to second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance ordinance 3546 to second reading. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that ordinance is moved to second reading, although we do need action on the emergency clause as well.
Yes, please take a separate vote on declaring the emergency.
I move to declare an emergency.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the emergency clause, please vote. Emergency clause is adopted for ordinance 3546 with a vote of five to zero. Also on first reading, we have ordinance 3547, an ordinance authorizing the restatement of the lease agreement and operation and maintenance contract dated April 1st, 1979, as heretofore amended, including the extensions of the lease term, providing for citizen-initiated referendum of said lease agreement in accordance with section 4-2 of the city charter. This is also in relation to the restatement of our Utilities Authority organizational documents.
Yes. If you have any questions, we'll answer them or bond counsel can as well.
Counselors, questions, comments, or action on the ordinance?
Motion to advance ordinance number 3547 to second read.
Second.
A motion and a second to advance the ordinance, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, ordinance 3547 is advanced to second reading. On second reading, we have ordinance 3545, an ordinance amending the Stillwater City Code by amending chapter 20, Fire Prevention and Protection, Article 2, Fire Department, by amending section 20-30, Fire Services Fees, by designating how funds are collected and how to be used, and by increasing the Rural Fire Services Contract Annual Fee, repealing all ordinances to the contrary and providing for separability. Counselors.
Move to adopt ordinance 3545.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, ordinance 3545 is adopted. Reports from the officers in the board, Ms. Carnley.
Nothing to report.
Mr. Moore.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is a busy and exciting time in Stillwater. One of the projects we discussed earlier this evening is the data center projects and the upcoming election regarding the electric provider for the data centers. However, we have many more projects and economic development initiatives underway, including the new terminal at Stillwater Regional Airport, which we had the groundbreaking of last week. Rails to Trails, which I will announce, this is a little bit of a surprise, it was going to come in an email, but I'll do it here. Today, the ODOT Board voted on the, our second phase of the Rails to Trails program and they approved the next 1.2 million for the second mile. So that happened today and it's really exciting for our city. So we have a lot of other projects and updates on our website, so you can visit stillwaterok.gov/projects and follow us on social media. Please use the city of Stillwater on Facebook, Instagram, X, which is Twitter, and YouTube. If you have any questions about projects on our website, please email the communication, our communications director, Don Dodson, at don.dodson@stillwaterok.gov.
Don Dodson. She's good. Yep, nice work. Vice Mayor.
Yes. Did you know that we now have enhanced event programming at the senior center? The October calendar of activities is available online at stillwater.gov/seniorcenter. There you will see activities from line dancing, cards, watercolor, zumba class, guitar lessons, to a Halloween party and more. If you have questions, contact senior center coordinator Teresa Goodner by email at teresa.goodner@stillwaterok.gov and by phone at 405-747-8080. We challenge you to go to the senior center this month and bring a friend.
All right. Counselor Hawkins.
We are developing the Envision Stillwater 2045 Comprehensive Plan and we need community input. Your opinions and life experience matter. They will be utilized as a blueprint to determine housing, economic development, workforce, and much more. Please complete the survey online at envisionstillwater2045.com or visit the public library for a printed copy. The last day to complete this survey is Sunday, October 20th. After the 20th, the feedback received will be compiled and used for Envision Stillwater 2045.
Excellent, thank you. Counselor Clark.
Surveys are currently being conducted for our neighborhood parks. If you utilize these specific spaces or live in neighborhoods near these parks, please participate in the short surveys. Also, we know it is early, but we ask that you save the date now and plan to attend the community meeting on January 9, 2025, to provide input as we develop a vision plan for parks, community spaces, and public facilities. These are your parks and facilities and spaces and we want to make sure they meet the needs of our residents and families. Your voice matters. Please plan to attend and join us on January 9. For more information, go to stillwaterok.gov/parks.
January 9th, Parks Meeting.
Be there.
Counselor Harden.
October 19th, Saturday, the city's watershed quality department will have its biennial household hazardous waste collection event. That's a time twister. The event will be from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Convenience Collection Center, another time twister, located at 807 South Perkins. During this event, residents are encouraged to drop off any household pollutants for free. Accepted items include oil-based paints, pesticides, herbicides, household cleaning products, pool chemicals, unused pharmaceuticals, and more. The Convenience Collection Center will still accept regular trash and recycling that day. However, trailers and commercial waste are not allowed. Yard waste will be accepted after 1:00 PM. The event is free for residents and a utility bill may be requested as proof. For a full list of acceptable items, go to stillwaterok.gov or call 405-533-8458.
Always a popular event. I will let you know about a new initiative we have to address sidewalk concerns throughout the community. Our community continues to become multimodal, embracing walking, running, cycling, and more. We want to make sure that we have safe and connected pathways. Residents are encouraged to share suggestions for sidewalk improvements through the city of Stillwater's Sidewalk Connect. Those who report connection and repair projects will receive an automated response letting them know their submission has been received. All projects submitted will be sent to our engineering and community development departments for review and incorporated into future planning efforts based on overall impact to the public, available budget, ongoing projects, and more. So you can report a sidewalk concern or request a connection, go to stillwaterok.gov/sidewalkconnect. I actually tested this out the other day, went on and told the folks at the city that we really need a sidewalk on Sanger Road between 19th and the, at least the tech park. It's actually a cool little service. You can go in and you can drop a pin in the map where you think, especially like where there's not a sidewalk that there needs to be one, or where there's a sidewalk that's in really bad shape. Really helpful if you go in and report those issues and so we know, you know, where those sidewalk connections are needed. So stillwaterok.gov/sidewalkconnect. I will also just reiterate that we have on November 4th, as the second date of the second public hearing, as the date of the second public hearing and presentation of the Stillwater Data Center Economic Development Project Plan, at which time, any interested person shall have the opportunity to be heard, in support of, or in opposition to, the proposed project plan prior to any action with regard to adoption of the project plan. November 4th, another public hearing. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn city council, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater City Council is now adjourned. At this time, I will call the order of the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting for October 7, 2024. Trustees, questions, comments, or action on the consent docket?
I move approval of consent.
Second.
A motion and a second on consent, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. Down to resolutions, 5A, Resolution SUA 2024-7, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an amended trust indenture, creating and recreating the Stillwater Utilities Authority, and containing other provisions relating thereto. As discussed in the city council meeting, questions, comments, or action on this resolution?
Motion to adopt resolution number SUA-2024-7.
Second.
A motion and a second to adopt the resolution, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that resolution is adopted. While trustee Clark excuses himself, I'm just going to reiterate, like I have to really read the whole title of these resolutions, right? You make me do that, like for legal reasons.
Yes, the charters has introduced by title.
All right. This is a long one, I'm just saying.
I enjoy it.
Resolution number SUA 2024, wow. Resolution SUA 2024-8, a resolution of the Stillwater Utilities Authority, the authority authorizing the issuance of its utility system and sales tax revenue bonds, the bonds, in one or more series in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $51,325,000, and authorizing a certificate of determination, approving the solicitation for and use of bond insurance and/or a reserve surety or insurance policy, designating underwriters with respect to the sale of the bonds, authorizing the sale of the bonds at negotiated sale and waiving competitive bidding, approving the form of bond purchase agreement, approving a general bond indenture and serious supplemental bond indenture, authorizing the issuance and securing of the payment of the bonds, providing that the organizational document creating the authority is subject to the provision of the bond indenture, ratifying and confirming a lease agreement as amended pertaining to the leasing of the city's water, sanitary sewer, solid waste, and electric systems to the authority, and authorizing an amended lease agreement and operation and maintenance contract, approving and authorizing execution of a sales tax agreement by and between the city and authority pertaining to a year-to-year pledge of certain sales tax revenue, approving the form of an official statement pertaining to the bonds, authorizing the chairman or vice chairman to approve any correction to said official statement, and authorizing distribution of the same, approving the form of a continuing disclosure agreement and an official statement, ratifying and confirming a power purchase and sale agreement and a capacity purchase agreement with the Grand River Dam Authority, authorizing the directing, authorizing the directing, sorry, authorizing and directing the modification of collateral pertaining to certain obligations of the authority to the Oklahoma Water Resources Board, authorizing and directing the execution of bonds and other documents relating to the transaction, including bond insurance and/or surety documents, and professional services agreements with bond counsel, financial advisor, and disclosure counsel, and containing other provisions relating thereto.
We like authorizing and directing better than the way we had it read, so.
I'm going to assume that that "the" should have been an "and".
That, you are correct, Mayor. I will make one other note. We talked through this with Ms. Carnley earlier this morning. We would propose adding about six words in section one, under indebtedness authorized. We're going to add in a provision that says funding a reserve requirement with respect to the bonds. That was contemplated. We thought it'd be clearer if that's. We thought it'd be clearer if that sentence was in there. So as you vote on this resolution, you would do so with that amendment, we would propose.
Yes, it's been changed to the resolution for signature and the, it's the one minor amendment since what was posted in the agenda packet. On, on face of Bond Counsel, with that amendment, we are seeking approval of resolution SUA 2024-8.
I think we've covered just about everything else, but we would be happy to answer any questions.
Action on the resolution?
Do we need to adopt it with those changes mentioned?
Yes, and if your motion could just be as amended at the end of the-
Motion to adopt resolution number SUA-2024-8 as amended.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, with Counselor Clark not participating, that resolution is adopted. Excuse me, with trustee Clark not participating. Any reports from the officers of the board? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to adjourn SUA, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater Utilities Authority is now adjourned and that concludes our meetings for the evening.